And so we have three that want to talk in our public hearing comments. Public comments, so when I state your name, please just come up to the podium. And if you didn't fill out one of these forms and you want to speak, you know, we'll certainly hear everybody who wants to speak. Give us your name and your address, and then you've got three minutes, and just be respectful, and then I'll give you the signal when three minutes is up. So first up is Mr. Tim Buick.
Buick.
Yep, like the car.
Like the car, okay. Well, you're up first, Tim.
We won't hold that against you.
And I'm never holding a Buick, so that's the easy thing to do.
Well, thank you for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Tim Buick, 1113 Overstream Lane in Matthews. And I do have a confession to make. I'm one of those tennis guys that used to make fun of this sport of pickleball, this stupid sport with wiffle balls and light little paddles, and I'm going, "Come on. This isn't really a sport, it's a game." Little wiffle balls, you've got to be kidding me. And then I played it, and it was fun, but I thought I'd get bored very quickly. How wrong I was. I had no idea that I would be soon teaching thousands of people how to play pickleball. And this is a sport that I used to think was a joke. So here's what this tennis guy, a lifelong tennis guy, has learned about pickleball over the last few years. It's easy to learn but difficult to master. It keeps you coming back for more. The more you play, the more you want to play. This is one of the few addictions in life that we actually want to encourage and promote. It is for this reason that pickleball is the fastest-growing sport in the country for three straight years with an estimated 36 and a half million players, and that represents a growth rate of a whopping 223 and a half percent over the past four years. The average age of a pickleball player is 38.1 years, and it continues to drop as kids continue to flock to this sport of all ages because of its easy accessibility. There's been talk about adding pickleball to, as a competitive high school sport, and colleges may soon be offering scholarships to play pickleball, if you can believe it. Realtors report that it is one of the most requested amenities in neighborhoods, and those communities are responding by building dedicated pickleball courts to fill the demand of the neighbors. Mecklenburg County Parks and Recreation have recently added 41 pickleball courts, and I know from personal experience that if you don't reserve early, you won't get a court, and that happens in many of those locations. I've had multiple people tell me, some with tears in their eyes, that literally pickleball has saved their life. Literally true. Some have told me they never played a sport before until pickleball. They told me that they were not active, they were not healthy, they had no point of connection with their significant other, and they had no social life until pickleball. And now they have all of that and more because of this sport. There are few sports that you can play that can give you instant competition, camaraderie, and community that pickleball provides. I am Director of Paddle Sports at Old Providence Racquet Club in Charlotte. It's the largest tennis club in Charlotte. We have 37 tennis courts, yet in this community of tennis diehards, the demand for pickleball has swelled to the point that we just built six lighted outdoor pickleball courts to satisfy the demands of our tennis members. Tennis and pickleball can and do coexist for their mutual benefit. Our neighbors are going to surrounding communities to play pickleball, but we want them to stay here. Play and stay, stay and play. People that play stay, and they support our local businesses in the process. Pickleball is good for the health of our community economically, physically, socially, and culturally. We are here in support of pickleball because we want to keep our players here in Stallings for the benefit of all. I appreciate your time, attention, and consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Next up is Karen Love.
Hello, I'm also here to talk about the pickleball and to add to what Tim has already said. I wanted to share why I think it is to the town of Stallings' advantage to build pickleball courts at Stallings Municipal Park. As we have established, pickleball is the number-one growing sport in the country, whereas there are many tennis courts that have been around for a long period of time, pickleball is becoming so very popular, and so many are embracing the sport. We see the percentage of people coming to play on the courts because we're here a lot. And there are three pickleball groups to every one group of tennis players that come to play on those courts. And we can confirm that by, you know, the people that work there can confirm that as well. Though I do not live in Stallings, I'm in Mecklenburg County, and there's places I could go to play tennis. I used to be a tennis player, I am now a pickleball player. I prefer pickleball, and I come to Stallings to play, so I'm an outsider coming into the community, but I'm spending my money here. I'm here three times a week, and I'm spending my money in this community because of that. While here, I end up spending a lot of money in your community of Stallings. I and my friends frequent the restaurants around the park, we go to chiropractors that are near the park, we go to the coffee shops that are near the park. I go to King's Nursery because I'm here. I take my car to Matthews Auto Shop, which is right up Stallings Road, right up the road here as well. And I would not be doing business out of those places if I were not coming to Stallings to play pickleball. I would be doing them closer to my home. Though your main concern is providing the needs and wants of your local community, I would like to suggest that you consider the economic impact on your business, businesses in this area that benefit from bringing pickleball players into your neighborhood. All the communities around you are getting on board and bringing in pickleball courts. Like we said, Mint Hill has come, Veterans Park and Will Grove have now turned a lot of their tennis courts into pickleball courts, and they are filled all the time. But that's really far to go for a lot of people. So, but, and you know how the old saying goes, "If you snooze, you lose." So, we're suggesting that we think it would be to your advantage to really consider having some just pickleball courts that are geared towards the players. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Karen. Next up is Mr. Mark Liedem.
Hi, Mark Liedem, 1312 Curryway here in Stallings. It was kind of a surprise to me when I came in and I saw my pickleball buddies, because they thought I was coming here to talk about pickleball, because I'm an avid pickleball player. But I am not here to talk about pickleball, and although I am Chair of the Local Community Council, I'm not here for that as well. I'm here to talk about the proposed rezoning on Potter Road. From a single-family residential to a conditional zoning multifamily tradition or transitional. Over here, a lot of this group here is part of the Curryway way people, and we're deadset against the rezoning for several reasons. One is our property values will go down, we're concerned about that. We don't know where the traffic infrastructure is going to be going, but, you know, even if you're going to put more units on that road, it's already backed up past Curryway, sometimes all the way halfway down to Walgreens. So we have some concerns about that. The other issue that you may not be aware of is you can tell, the Curry Place, our residents can tell when there's the peak water issues going on, because certain times of the day, our water pressure drops immensely. And so I know 10 o'clock is one of those times, because that's one of the times I tend to want to get a shower, and what happened? So there's a variety of reasons that we're set against this. Also, my concern is, we don't want the precedence of, okay, we okayed it there, will we now okay it to this big piece of property that's on the other side of Curry Place? So we're concerned about zoning altogether, going from a single-family residence into any kind of multi-housing. People, there's so many options for multi-housing here in Stallings, and more continue to be built. So we're deadset against having the rezoning. Thank you.
And then last is Mr. Jeff Barnes.
Good evening. Thank you for your time. I too am here to talk about the...
Could you give us your address, please?
Oh, sorry, 4845 Potter Road. I am too talking about the proposed development, if you will, right there on Potter's. My family has had this land for, since 1945. My grandfather had the original property that the townhomes are considered to be built. He sold that to Robert Stevens before I was born. We own Curry Place, we own the property across from Curry Place. I get growth. I was in the first meeting, I'm not here to go against growth, I know what's going to happen one way or the other, whether it's me or somebody else. I am asking to think about the infrastructure of drainage specifically. My sister lives at the front in the field, my mom and myself live in the back pastures behind the proposed area. All the water that comes through the berm and the pipe at Curry Place, which the developer put in, dumps out 15 feet before our driveway, and the water from across the street, and the townhomes across the street, comes under the road in front of my sister's house, which has eroded our driveways and eroded the ditch. So we can't cut the ditches, you can't make a right turn if you're coming from Chestnut, you can't make a right turn into my driveway if you're pulling a trailer. My parents are elderly, my mom's concerned about fire trucks and ambulances coming in, God forbid they ever need to, because the wings are gone from our driveway, because there's nothing under it anymore. About a year ago, we couldn't roll our trashcans out to the road anymore, because we were stopping traffic, I guess. So Waste Connections now brings a garbage truck down our driveway, which we're about 1,500 feet off the road, but that garbage truck has also busted the wings of our driveway. So what we need is like a storm drain right at the base of that to catch that water, and it to go on down the way, so we can fill that ditch in and cut it, and not have to weed it, because we're not getting any younger either. And if a car falls off of that ditch, there's nothing anybody can do to get it out. So the Curry Place ditch is nice, you can cut it, and you can distinctly tell where our property starts, down to where you guys are talking about putting those townhomes in, it's just going to make it worse. And I know there's a wetlands back there behind it, which backs up to my property as well. So I really, I spoke about this the first meeting, I really would like you all to consider helping us out with that, because that's not our water. We're not, that's not natural water, that's water coming off of those lots through that pipe that sits big around, which I get it, I used to be in commercial or residential development, I know that has to happen, but you can't dump water like that and expect it to be okay without, you know, infrastructure to hold it. So I'd be glad to meet anybody out there that wants to look at it, but it's a big problem, and it's just going to get worse. And again, I want the EMS and those kind of folks to be able to get back to us if we need to. So, thank you.
All right, thank you, Jeff. All righty, that ends our public comments, but I would like to, you know, you had a couple people speak on the pickleball. Who's here on the pickleball issue? I'd like to see, see how many of y'all are here.
And I also have a petition here, I think you might have gotten a copy of it, but we have 135 signatures of people.
Do we already have a copy of this? No, okay, we'll take it, sure. You can just give it to Erin here, she's, she's, keeps us straight on the paperwork. But we'll consider it, appreciate the comments, and then, you know, we're going through our budget season right now, so we're trying to figure out how much money we can spend on everything, so we'll consider it, we certainly hear you, and we'll consider it. So thank you all for coming tonight. And then the Curry Place folks, and then the rezoning, it's on the agenda here tonight, so just bear with us a little bit, so we'll get through that. All right, let's see, we got our consent agenda. Any explanation you want to give us there, Alex, on anything?
Yes, sir, happy to answer any questions you might have.
On the 261,000, so where, what fund is that coming out of?
I believe what this is, is it's cleaning up the capital fund, which is over. So we're going to appropriate 261,000 from unrestricted fund ballots and transfer it to the Potter Road Pleasant Plains Capital Project. Is there a question you had on there?
I just don't know what fund that's coming out of.
It'd be coming out of the general fund.
And it says the right-of-way acquisition, the total, the total we spent is 1.4 million out of Stallings' money?
I think, I'd have to go back and look, to be honest with you, give me a second, I can look it up.
Well, just curious, yes, we don't need to...
I want to say in total, the town spent, I want to say close to $2 million.
Yes, I thought it'd be more than that, yeah, all right. So anybody have any questions on the consent agenda?
So this is not more money that we're appropriating, it's just moving things around to the right slots.
That's right, yes, sir. It's just cleaning up for accounting purposes now that the project is, the Potter Pleasant Plains project is, DOT is going to start working on that mid-June to late June, somewhere in there.
All right, any other questions about consent agenda?
May I move approval of the consent agenda?
All right, motion by Mr. Richardson, second by Mr. Shaw, all in favor? Aye. Ayes have it, thank you all. All right, the agenda approval, let's see, any additions, amendments?
Mayor, if the board is open to it tonight, at whatever time slot is convenient for you, I'd like to give a report on the county's sewer capacity situation as it relates to Stallings.
Why don't you take the number six spot, since we don't have to do any continued budget discussions, I don't think. Is anybody okay with that?
Yep.
Alex on the stormwater?
Mayor, since we've given Ms. Donnelly direction on reservicing the tennis courts, I'd like to add an item to talk about the pickleball court renovations, just for discussion tonight if possible.
All righty, are the pickleball people still here?
No.
Well, you...
I'll speak for them.
Well, let's put that 4A then, so they don't have to stay through all the, all the other issues, pickleball. All righty, any other changes? Can I get a motion to accept it?
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda with the following additions. Item 4A, tennis court renovations, and item 6, replace continued budget discussion with county sewer update, sewer water update from the manager.
All right, thank you, Brad. I got a motion from Brad, second by Taylor Ray, all in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have it, thank you all. All righty, Max, you're up. Conditional zoning 24.03.01, I'll open the public hearing. Y'all that don't know, this is Max, he's our planning director.
Hello, everybody. Thank you, council. Give me one second, let me just pull my, I don't, can I have my PowerPoint up? I'll just open it up under... All right, so this is CZ 240301, so conditional rezoning.
Excuse me, did you?
Okay. Excuse me, sorry. So this is a CZ 240301, conditional rezoning. It's a conditional rezoning request for a change in zoning from SFR 3, Single Family Residential 3, to conditional zoning multifamily transitional for the property of 1.75 acres at 4923 Potter Road. We had a community meeting in March, there's about five people that showed up at the community meeting, and I think you were there, we discussed stormwater. We had a subcommittee meeting last month with council, some, three council members, we discussed the site plan. We had planning board last week, which unanimously recommended approval, and then tonight's the council meeting. This is the street view of 4923 Potter Road, this is a single-family home currently on this property. As I said, it was 1.75 acres, so it's currently Single Family Residential 3, which has a density of like 2.9 units an acre, so they could technically subdivide it five times into five different homes on this property if they would like to. Yes, so the Single Family Residential 3 on this property, I'm going to go to the next era, slide actually. If, if, depending on how the property could be subdivided, they could potentially put five lots, single-family lots on this property. But that would depend on landscaping, open space, tree save, things like that still. This is the site plan, I've included the site plan in front of each of you, at an 11 by 17 paper, so you can look at it further, and it shows 10 townhomes with a detached garage, there's one entrance off of Potter Road, has the parallel parking, tree save in the rear. So the current dimensions of Single Family Residential 3 has a different lot size compared to what they're requesting, has a 10,000 square foot lot size, 80-foot lot width, 30-foot front and rear setbacks, and then what they're providing is 5,000 square foot lots with a 42 front, width, 12-foot front setback, four feet on the sides. What I want to point out is the dwelling units per acre, 2.9 units an acre for SFR 3, and they're proposing 6.85, but they are town, townhomes, so they're different. The future land use plan shows this area as walkable neighborhood. The primary land uses are single-family detached and multifamily. The consistency is mostly consistent, and there is no small area plan for this area. The greenway master plan shows this area to include a 12 to 14-foot multi-use path. The applicant does not show that, they show a six-foot concrete sidewalk with pavers on each side, and they're incorporating some elements of their adopted streetscape plan, however, there are no streetscape requirements, only greenway plan requirements for this This is another site, the same site plan, just wanted to pull it up again. So staff recommendation, so the comp plan shows this area as primarily consistent, I mean, it shows single-family detached and a multifamily, but it doesn't show single-family attached, but that's the missing piece. So I would say with my recommendation, it's mostly consistent. The greenway master plan, however, is not consistent. So they're proposing a smaller width greenway than what the greenway master plan's adopted as. So if you wanted, staff's recommendation, the plan is inconsistent with the greenway master plan, and we don't recommend approval of anything that's inconsistent with any of our plans. Do you have any questions for me before, if the applicants here as well, they would like to speak?
All right, any questions for Max? All right, we may, I'm sure there'd be some other ones, but...
Yeah, I'll be, I'll, I'll be in the back, I'll have the, can the applicant speak?
Hang on, Max, just a question. So, so we heard from Mr. Barnes and others about a stormwater runoff, is that a separate issue that, that is just considered outside of the scope of this development?
So currently...
That part of the, I feel like that's a stormwater problem that's existing because of some developed, built on Curry Place being developed. I think he mentioned some townhomes across the street as well. I'm concerned about that, but I feel like that's an issue that we resolve through stormwater funds in a project, is that correct, would you imagine?
If it's, if it's an existing issue, then we would evaluate it, determine whether it's eligible for existing funds. I think what I heard Mr. Barnes says is his concern was that this project, he was concerned that it might exasperate the issue.
It would be right in front of this area as well.
Very good, thanks. So perhaps regardless, further exploration, exploration is...
I guess you could say that the developed area would create more impervious land than, say, five single-family homes. Is that, would that be a fair statement? So 10 attached town, or two buildings of five attached townhomes with garages behind and paved driveways would create more impervious area, I think that's the concern, right, rather than five single-family homes? Am I understanding that correctly, from a stormwater perspective?
So, from a stormwater perspective, I would say I don't know if it would create more impervious surface, I would have to see a plan for five, for five single-family homes, but their concern's currently existing, and the developer is, this specific project's not responsible for the current stormwater.
Yeah, I'm just not sure how to frame the stormwater issues, but I'm getting more clear now, but you...
But they are proposing a BMP as well, and I'll let the developer kind of address those concerns.
All right, well, let's go ahead and hear from the developer.
Yeah, all right, I'll pull up your presentation, give me just one second. Oh, that's why I couldn't find anything, we're in a different folder. Okay, sorry about that.
My name's Michael Fess, I am with Montrose at 15905 Brookway Drive in Huntersville, I'm a consultant for the owner, Emilio, over here. So tonight, going to explain the project, the why, of why, essentially the why we want to develop this. Max did a great job in explaining the project. So here's some project information, as Max pointed out, we're looking for 10 townhomes across two buildings, so five single-family attached homes. And the minimum lot size is 5,000 square feet, and I was just looking up some of the parcel sizes in Curry Place, and it's about equal-sized lots of what we're asking for, we're just asking to attach the homes versus have it detached. So going through, we're proposing almost a quarter acre tree save, over a quarter acre open space, max building height of 25. So here's a parcel in question, this is a mousework, yeah. So Potter Road, right across the street from the existing townhome community, and so it's generally, it's a mid-block site, older ranch home currently on it. Here's an aerial view, again, you can see there's a similar townhome community across the street, we're proposing to front the townhomes on the Potter Road for a better aesthetic view versus the sides of the unit, as well as providing garages behind the unit, so you're not looking into parked cars or an open parking lot like the, the community across the street. Here's the rezoning plan, it's difficult to read a black and white plan, so created a simple color rendering of some of the details that we're offering. So on the west side, we're proposing a 28-foot buffer as well as a fence the entire length of the western property line, the Plan West, and east side, 20-foot buffer, again, with a six-foot tall privacy fence to screen the neighboring property, and then a 40-foot undisturbed buffer in the rear. One 20-foot wide private shared driveway to access the rear and the detached garages in all the units, and we're providing not only a two-car garage, but also a driveway large enough to park at least two cars in for each, each townhome. As Max said, we're proposing a six-foot wide sidewalk, but we're going to widen it with additional pavers on either side, one to make it wider, and two for a higher aesthetic feel to it, to generally meet the intent of the greenway plan. When we held our community meeting, we got some concerned residents talking about, why are you putting in a 12-foot sidewalk that doesn't connect to either side? There's nothing out there right now. So we amended the plan for that. Emilio, the owner, has committed to an enhanced landscaping along the frontage, as well as rear open space. After a meeting with staff, they asked... After a meeting with staff, they asked us to add some additional parking, which isn't showed on this rendering, but it's parallel parking along the back um, of the shared driveway for visitors, off-street parking. As Max alluded to, we are proposing a BMP at the rear. So some of the major concerns the residents brought up was stormwater. Um, we met with Mr. Barnes at the community meeting. Should be noted, all the stormwater from Curry, all from the Barnes property, all flows to this property and around the rear. There is currently a man-made ditch on the adjacent property that then curves around and extends, crosses the entire rear. So, um, that ditch has turned into a wetland over time. So I don't know what happened when the Curry Place, uh, was developed, but all that stormwater's been redirected onto this property. There's a flare-down section, um, right at Potter Road here, and then just drains through an open ditch through the back. So we're looking at protecting that, um, due to the wetlands that have been established back there, that we're not going to impact the wetlands whatsoever. So we're also committed to improving the storm drainage and studying it as it comes onto the property to make sure we don't back up. The state requires that we meet certain one, ten, and twenty-five-year stormwater, or storm requirements to accept that, treat it, and slowly release it. So our proposal with this development is, um, the downstream, all the stormwater downstream will actually be improved, um, once we're done. So, um, also during the community meeting, it was, um, we're, it was brought up about possible turn lane. And we're talking with NC DOT right now. And we did commit to Mr. Barnes, if the DOT requires us to do any off-site improvements along Potter Road, that we'd be happy to address his stormwater problem at his driveway. So the dark green at the rear and the sides, um, again, it's a buffer. And if, we're hoping to save all the existing, uh, trees at the rear and the side. And then anywhere it is disturbed, that we will replan it, um, to make sure it does provide, uh, a, um, screening from the adjacent communities. Here's representative elevation of one of the buildings, um, that were, uh, Emilio's looking to construct. So you can see the articulation, the offset from each unit, so it doesn't look like one long straight building. All front entryways, um, worked with staff. Um, they really wanted it to be, um, towards the front of Potter Road closer. So as you step out, you're stepping out and actively, um, engaging the sidewalk and the public space along Potter Road.
Is that a, that represent the scale of, of one of the five-unit buildings? Or is that a four-unit building or a two-unit building?
That's a four-unit building. So that, we didn't have a rendering for a five-unit building, so it would just be one more on that. So, um, we're self-imposing some architectural conditions, either shutters or forged trim on the windows, um, uh, along the front. Front porches, a water table, so all these are included in the conditional rezoning as an architectural condition. Again, some of the highlights, we're requesting a ten-single-family attached townhomes. And as Max indicated, uh, in your plan, you either have single-family homes or multifamily garden-style apartments. Right now, we're in a housing crisis, um, in the Charlotte, uh, MSA, in the Char- Charlotte region. And that's because of what's called the missing middle. There's plenty of apartments out there right now. Some people say we have too many apartments. They've overbuilt. And they still have, I think they said seventeen thousand apartments that are going to be delivered over the next year. And then the single-family homes, people are just priced out with the interest rates, the cost of construction, and just all the delays that, it's inhibiting, uh, the development of single-family. There's really a shortage of what's called this missing middle. And this is, uh, price point-specific, um, that, so people that can't afford to buy a new single-family home installing can't afford to buy a townhome.
So, well, that answers one of my questions. These are all for sale?
They're, they're being built and platted for sale. Um, again, it's Emilio's project, and I'll have him come up here, and he can answer that question in a second. Okay.
Name's Emilio Concittori, and, um, of the ten, three is spoken for from my children, because, um, they're buying three of them. And the other seven will be for sale.
Thank you.
Said, uh, two-car detached garages, uh, with additional two-car parking for every, um, townhome, plus additional visitor parking along the, um, the back of the shared driveway. By having the detached garages, uh, each, uh, townhome gets in a personal space, whether they want to do a patio or nice little fence and small, um, dog run. And then, uh, let's see, landscape buffers, fences, uh, to protect, to buffer adjacency and enhance sidewalk along Potter Road. So we'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right. Thank you, Mike. Any questions for Mike or Emilio?
I do.
Yep, Lori?
How many feet from the road, Potter Road, to the house? House?
Let's see if they're gonna let me see.
From the road to the house?
Yeah.
To the front, or one inch is, uh, twenty feet.
So, I'm, sorry, ma'am. So right now, there's, um, the existing edge of pavement to the front of the proposed townhomes. Pardon? A little over twenty feet. And then we'll be installing curb and gutter along, so it, we're generally looking right about twenty feet, though.
Okay, and how many, um, of the visitors' parking spaces, I see you haven't delineated those yet?
Uh, they are on the, the actual rezoning plan, so yeah, so we have five. Five.
That's it?
Besides the driveway. Because there's also a two-car garage.
But I, I know, but, you know, townhomes always have, short of, of, um, parking, you know, you got Christmas or whatever. And it doesn't seem to be a, it's not really a road or anything else to, you know, I'm a visitor and I can't find a parking spot. I'm gonna figure out someplace on a road, but I'm not sure that that would be wide enough.
We did talk to Max about, we could do another, more parking space that we wanted to pull in, um, which would take up a little bit more of the open space, but it is possible to put in additional instead of parallel, it would be pull-in.
So the, the wetlands, are, is it state or federal?
Uh, both. Technically, they're, um, it is jurisdictional, uh, due to the drainage. We feel it is. We haven't had a, um, we haven't had the Army Corps of Engineers out there to concur that it's jurisdictional. But we did, uh, our consultant believes it is jurisdictional. So it's tough to see on this plan, but generally, this area is wetlands on either side of that stream, or ditch. Now, the ditch is not a stream, but on either side of it, um, it does have the soil, the vegetation, and the hydrology to be determined as jurisdictional, so that's why we're protecting it.
I didn't know there could be both federal, one, wetland is both federal and state?
Um, well, there, it used to be. So the North Carolina General, um, Legislature just passed, um, a bill that said, um, North Carolina Department Environmental Quality must, um, have the same standards as the US Army Corps of Engineers. And then the Supreme Court, Federal Supreme Court, also just had a decision to redefine what wetlands are. So there's still some gray area there. But generally, right now, they are looking at, um, the, North Carolina has to follow what the Corps says. And North Carolina issues its own permit outside of the Corps if you're going to impact it. But we're not impacting it. We are saying it's wetlands, we're going to protect it, we're not touching it, so we don't need a permit to impact it, because we're not impacting it.
So is the, is the federal, is it twenty feet, still twenty feet? That you have to be from the wetlands?
No. There, the wetlands have no buffer to it. So technically, you can disturb all the way up to the edge of the wetlands. Some streams have buffer, um, and so it's more for, um, the, um, they call it a swim buffer. And I can't remember the acronym of it, but it's, um, stormwater, some mitigation or measures.
Federal used to have twenty feet. So my biggest concern then is the, um, the walkway. It's supposed to be a multi, multi-use. Twelve to fifteen, twelve to fourteen feet. And, um, I, I just, I, I'm not sure that I would want to have this small, you know, just a regular sidewalk. Whoever, you know, the council was, decided that this should be a multi-use, um, area. And it just seems like this is, I don't know, one of the first ones to come into this area. And we're gonna say, okay, you can go with six feet, and then what's the next one? The one next door, they're gonna want to go with six feet, and over there. That, that's what I think bothers me the most, that I, I can't see doing, you know, maybe you can reconfigure this to have fewer homes and, you know, the multi-use path.
So are you asking if we revise it, uh, to increase the sidewalk to meet the minimum greenway standard Max talked about?
Yeah, I'm just asking you if, you know, you can think about that. Right now, it, you know, this is just my opinion, but I just don't, um, I don't want to go with, you know, something that, you know, like I say, some council decided that it should be multi-use there, and I, I don't see how we can, um.
I actually was thinking about that, and we were looking at actually putting on a, a three-foot brick wall right in front of the property.
In front of what?
Right in front of, before the road, to do a three-foot brick wall to give it aesthetic value. And instead of, instead of putting it into a larger sidewalk to have more appeal, we would just do something in masonry all the way across.
I'd do that for children, so.
So it helps for safety. Yeah.
Yeah, they're fast.
But that's why I wanted to do that instead, for safety purposes.
Give me a time.
So instead of doing a large sidewalk, which I'm not sure how that's going to benefit, do a smaller sidewalk and do a three-foot brick wall from one side of the property to the other for safety reasons, for security reasons, and for aesthetic value. That was really the thought we had on that.
Then that six-foot wall would shrink?
A three-foot tall wall, just straight across.
I mean, six-foot sidewalk would shrink, so you could get the wall in there?
Just six feet, so we can do the wall properly, to give it, just not just aesthetic value. It's really not about the cost of pouring concrete. It's more about thinking about the whole process. And I wanted to have it for safety reasons, because as I said from the initial part, three of my children are going to be owning one of these units. And, um, so they're gonna have families, and that was a thought I had on that. Not on the plan, but it was something I was going to do.
Anything else, Lori?
No.
All right. Thank you, sir. Any other questions for the applicant, Steven?
I'm assuming, just like most townhomes, this will have an HOA?
Yes, sir.
Anything else? Any, any questions for the applicant?
No questions, no.
All right. Thank you. We, I'm, I'm sure we might have some more questions.
Absolutely.
Also signed up to speak in the public comments, I think that they might be the pickleball people. Karen Love, I think she's gone, so, uh, and then Mark, did, did you want to speak to this, but you, you've already spoken? No, about this rezoning. Yeah, you've already spoken.
Yeah.
So we got you.
Everything looks good on paper, uh, and that's my concern.
Oh, if you want to keep speaking, come on up to the podium, so we can get you on the record.
Thank you. Um, everything looks good on paper, as well as it's made to look. But in reality, what happens? I, I've, I certainly side with our neighbor, because, um, I know we've addressed with Stallings about trying to do some drainage issues, because some of our residents are complaining about being flooded out themselves. But I, but I guess my concern is, um, I don't see enough space, um, for cars and vehicles. That's definitely not enough, knowing that if he talks about having his three kids living in one unit.
Three units.
Three different units.
My apologies.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so, so again, my concern is where are all those cars gonna go to? You know, we have an HOA that says you can't park on the street, uh, overnight. Does that mean that they're gonna start finding no places at their place? And, oh, look, there's a development right next door. We can cut through their yards and come to, um, visit our neighbors at this facility. That's a concern. I, I, again, with the, with the sewage and the water that we're having right now, my concern is, where's all this water pressure gonna go? We, as a neighborhood, we have a nice little flow system, like, what's wrong with the water? You know, and it's that time of the day again. It's, it's reality for us. And again, ten units, um, will add extra burden of that. I, I just, am I missing anything? The traffic, yeah, the traffic is always gonna be a mess. And, and, and looking at that, those people are gonna be waiting a while to get in and out, just like we have to. You know, so it's, it's not that easy of a solution to say, fine, let's just go with it. And again, our, our concern is, we don't want to open up the door for rezoning from single-family homes to multifamily establishments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Jeff, you signed up to speak again, but did, uh, somebody else, did you want to speak again, or did you want to?
Yeah, can we go back to a different map? Can we go back to the original shot? I just want to make sure everybody's on the same page. That's perfect. Can you zoom in on that? Like, for old people like me, keep going. There you go, stop. Can I walk close, so everybody can point at me?
You may approach the bench.
Your house down there, the, uh.
My house is down.
Just next to that red arrow.
Arrow is, in that field. Uh, my sister, who's here in the front row, that's her house, uh, in front of me, up at the road.
At Potter Road?
Right.
Yeah, okay.
So the water, there's three spots from Curry Place that comes onto our property. The only one that I'm talking about today is at Potter Road, just on the other side of her, our shared driveway. You'll see it, right there. And it goes all the way down. Now, I know from our first meeting that, you know, these guys are willing to work with us if we get a turn lane, and I appreciate that. But I promise you, with all I got, they're gonna stop the water at their, at that junction he mentioned earlier, in the, in the man-made ditch, which is correct. That's, and that pond that they have will work. I used to put those in for a living. Problem is, it will back up right there, and it will erode Potter Road away. There's this much dirt between Potter Road and our ditch, which is this deep. From my sister's house, all the way down through there, and my driveway is backed up and the concrete's busted off, and it's eroded out from underneath the concrete. So if, if they're gonna do storm drain from the property line down, it needs to be storm drain all the way up to where Curry Place is coming out of Curry Place, and that burn, or we can hang it up. And that's the only thing, I'm, I just want to be able to get emergency services back there. I want to be able to cut the ditch. I understand this all, everything on this screen used to be a farm, and we're the last ones there. We still got animals back there, we still take care of the land, and I understand growth around us. But we should be penalized, because we're the good old boys. You know, that's kind of what I look at. I've lived here my whole life. So I just wanted it to be where we can cut it, and it can drain, and we can get fire trucks back there. That's it. But if we don't do that, it will, it will be gone. Because this roded in the last five years twice what it is now.
Thank you, thank you, Jeff. Did anybody else wish to speak that didn't sign up? Yeah, you're welcome to come up and speak, and just state your name and your address, please.
I'm Lauren Barnes, forty-eight, forty-five Potter Road. That's my husband. And I am just, I'm always thinking about safety, so, you know, I just am very concerned about the amount of space between Potter Road and these townhomes. It doesn't have anything to do with me, but, you know, as a parent, if I were to have a townhome and, you know, my kids run out the doors, you know, when they were little all the time, and, I mean, you're talking twenty feet, it's like ten seconds, and they're out on Potter Road. It's just such a fast road now, and, um, so I just hope that you consider, really consider that. And is it, is it too much on one's property? Is all this just too much? Maybe we, you know, an option would be to scale down, move back a little bit. It's, you know, and see, on the other townhomes right across, you know, they're not facing the road, they're just like kinda facing each other. And to me, that seemed a little more safe when you have children, or families. So I don't know if that's something to consider, but that's just a little concern for me. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Lauren. Anybody else wish to speak? All right.
Mr. Mayor, could I ask our engineering director a couple of questions, something that just came up?
I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. And then, Kevin?
So, Mr. Parker, there was a couple of things that I heard just now, one regarding a, a brick wall, another regarding brick pavers. And you don't typically see that along North Carolina Department of Transportation roads. Those are state-maintained roads. And I'm curious as to why, if there might be a reason for that. Do you think the state would allow those kind of, like a brick wall that close to the road, or brick pavers? Would there be any ADA concerns, that kinda thing?
Yeah, no, good questions. The brick wall would need to be located outside of the right-of-way. That's something NC DOT would, would not allow. But that's just my, my initial assumption without actually talking to them, but their experience, pretty, pretty much anything non-standard is not typically allowed in their right-of-way.
Is inside the DOT right-of-way, or not?
If I understood the scenario correctly, it was gonna be placed right along the front of the sidewalk here, closer towards Potter Road, and that, that would be located within NC DOT's right-of-way, and ultimately, would, would not...
The right-of-way is lined, shown on the plan.
Well, yeah, I'll point that out to me.
Yeah. Zoom in. So, the, there, that double skip line? That's the right-of-way. So the sidewalk is outside the right-of-way, it hugs it right along here?
And that's where the wall is going, correct?
That would be correct, and so we have room to, you know, realign the sidewalk, push it closer to the units to be able to fit that wall where it does get a little tight.
Ultimately, the, the point stands that if it's in their, if it's in NC DOT's right-of-way, that it probably would not be permitted.
Right.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Yeah. And then regarding the brick pavers, um, there's no maintenance issues whatsoever, which typically does not happen with brick pavers. Given, you know, there's always settling with those, you've got the sand that you put, that you place the pavers on top of, in between, those, those wash out. It's a, it's a, it's a constant maintenance issue that ultimately leads to ADA issues. So given that we maintain sidewalks within NC DOT's right-of-way, I would not be comfortable permitting that from a, from a maintenance and ADA perspective. Correct. Gaps within those pavers as well, exactly. Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah.
All right, now, Max, the only question I had was, uh, the area townhomes that are in that area, do you know the square footage of those townhomes?
The which townhomes, I'm sorry?
The ones that are in the area, the other...
I don't know the square footage, so like Potter points across the street, I'm not aware of the square footage at the top of my head, but I can show you an aerial of it.
No, that's all right.
Okay. And I do wanna point out, there's conditions listed in front of you that I did put as part of a plan. If, if it was adopted, those would be part of the conditions. Anything like the wall, removal of brick pavers, anything additional, aesthetics of the home would need to be amended on that sheet as well, as part of the conditions, if council wanted to change anything, or if the applicant wanted to agree to any of those changes. Just wanted to point that out.
I don't know if anybody's had a chance to read this whole document, but anything out of the ordinary on these conditions, Max?
No, it primarily has to do with the placement of the homes. It has some architectural standards as well, like staggering of the homes instead of the flat facade. Our ordinance does ask for alternative designs, so different colors. They showed all white. Planning board liked the all-white, but our ordinance kind of tries to lean towards different aesthetic designs and variations for townhomes, so that's why I put in those conditions, and the applicant did agree to them. And part, just also discussing the pavers, we have pavers as part of the streetscape plan, and so I was trying to come up with a plan that somewhat met halfway, and I asked the applicant to include those pavers as from the streetscape plan that we've adopted in his plan, even though his site does not show streetscape. So I just wanted to kinda clarify that.
But any enhancements that we've talked about tonight, that the developers talked about, we need to include them tonight?
We would need to amend them, yeah, the conditions. And I can pull them up on screen, just so everybody can see the staff conditions. So the applicant and I sat down for a little bit and discussed all these.
Well, Mike talked about debris or parking.
That's part of the, some of the conditions as well. So I just said, so I think A covers that the final development must match the initial concept plan submitted for approval, which would include the parallel parking.
Well, he was talking about to pull in parking, to get more, uh...
Oh, we would have to amend the conditions, yes, to, to add that.
Yeah, because of what Lori was talking about, you know?
Yep. And if you wanted the wall as well, that would, you would have to amend the conditions for that, too.
Is there a definition for a six-foot fence? Is it meant to be a privacy fence, or can it be a wide-open, see-through-it fence?
So he would have to follow the ordinance requirements, so he would probably, we could change it to say opaque fence would be helpful to kinda clarify what kinda fence. But it's not specified the exact fence on the plans. He would just have to follow the ordinance as it states, so he could technically build whatever fence he wanted to.
Max, on the plan, we did say privacy.
Okay, so on the plan, thank you for clarifying that. This is wooden here. So we'll just have to...
Opaque fence.
Oh, it already does say opaque on the plans. He clarified that for me. Thank you.
All right. Thanks.
So the roadway, I didn't address the ownership, but I would say the HOA, we would recommend ultimately the HOA take the responsibility of that. We can put that as part of the conditions. I would say since we're adding a, a few different conditions or discussing it, maybe recommend bringing back conditions at a future meeting, so that you could, the developer could address those, just as a consideration. It does not. So they, it would be recommended to be private ultimately.
You're talking about the twenty-foot private shared driveway?
Correct. So, yeah, staff would recommend that, stay private ultimately.
All right, Stephen? Yes, sir.
Talked about the expense of maintaining that road for just ten town, townhomes. Do we feel comfortable that that HOA will be able to maintain the wooden fences? Because privacy fence is say they're wooden, and then this road...
So, um, to address the overarching HOA, yeah, HOA, townhome communities are generally, all exterior maintenance are covered under the HOA. That includes roofing, exterior cleaning, painting of trim, as well as a driveway. Being a twenty-foot wide driveway, we were talking about it during engineering of making it more of a heavy duty, just to prevent any future maintenance concerns and extend the life of it versus just making it a standard residential driveway. So it would be basically designed similar to what we built out at Bailey Mills. So, you know, eight inches of stone, I think we're at five inches of asphalt. So it will be designed, the thickness of it, similar to a public road.
Are the garbage trucks expected to go to the back to pick up trash?
That was brought up, and we've had three different options we've been looking at. First, we brought up valet trash service, which a lot, is coming a lot more common now. It's where the small private trucks come to pick up the trash. During discussions with Max early on, he'd prefer to keep it in the town, in town service. So we looked at ways of our, do we put the trash cans along the private drive, keep them on a Potter Road, and that was our preference. So if the truck can just back in, pick up the cans right there, and then pull right back out.
Accessible is it for turnaround for trucks, including fire trucks?
Being a, all the townhomes are fronting Potter Road, all life safety, fire trucks, fire ambulance will be served by Potter Road. So that driveway is designed just to be a driveway, just similar to...
They won't be able to get back there easily?
That, the, they should be able to pull a fire hose between the buildings or around one of the sides. So when we go into engineering and it's reviewed by fire, we have to have a certain length from the nearest hydrant to be able to, for a hose pull.
So then would that just shut down traffic on that road?
For a life safety incident? I would imagine they would if the house is on fire. So...
Let's, uh, talk about sewer.
Mm-hmm. Our favorite topic in Union County.
Where do y'all stand with sewer?
Sewer, we, um, Union County Water requires us to submit a sketch plan, and generally wait until rezoning. Union County's process to get approval on sewer takes about a year to get a sewer permit. We could have every other permit probably six to eight months, but right now, the way Union County's process is, where we submit a sketch plan or about fifty percent set of engineering plans, it'll take them three, four, or five months to review it. Once they review and approve the sketch plan, we have to order a capacity study. That capacity study, it will deal with both sewer and water, so we'll know if there is a water pressure, water flow issue, that will be made relevant in that capacity study. But knowing that the, uh, the Yancey Water Basin coming in from the east, so the one that's under construction, it's a massive water project that's bringing raw water into Union County from out towards Almarle, I believe.
Water's not a problem.
Yeah, I didn't think so. Sewer capacity, I know at the last Union County Board Commissioners Meeting, they talked about allocated, allowing municipalities to allocate their own sewer capacity. I haven't gotten details on it, but I did hear that that was discussed. Sewer capacity for this area goes through the, um, the large pump station on the north side of seventy-four, Lake Park, I think it's called. That one's currently being taken offline with the Crooked Creek Interceptor Project, which will be done, I've been told, twelve months. In reality, it's probably gonna be closer to eighteen months before capacity. So even if we get a successful rezoning tonight, if, it will still be eighteen months before we get sewer permits to be able to start development.
Is this project in Crooked Creek, or Twelve Mile Creek?
I believe it's in Crooked Creek. So... Is it Twelve Mile?
Yes.
Okay, Twelve Mile. So there is still paper capacity available, from my understanding, at Twelve Mile.
Item six, that would be interesting, then, with Alex's update.
All righty, any other questions for the applicant, or, uh, I've closed the public hearing, so a discussion among council?
Mayor, I don't have any questions. I'm struggling here. I'm loathe to disagree with a volunteer planning committee, and I'm, and, and, please, no offense, I'm just struggling to find things I like about this here, this here. I like the fact that it's facing the road, that's good design, much better than across the street, where it may be safer, Ms. Barnes, but, but just, it, it's a, it's a difficult view. I think twenty feet is really close. I don't know what you and I are apart, but it feels like twenty feet here, and I get worried about that. I also think it's crowded, I think there's stormwater issues. But my biggest issue, guys and ladies, is just more philosophical. When we began a small area planning process a few years ago, we developed small area plans, and you'll notice a small sentence in the presentation that this area doesn't have one. So when I see that, it doesn't mean we've forgotten about this area, it just means we didn't spend a lot of time focusing on that area as a node. What I mean by node is a retail node, a, um, a hospital development node, an industrial node, like we've talked about with Union West Business Park. It doesn't mean we forgot about it, we just, in my mind, means we just want it to stay the same. So that makes it harder for me to go from single-family three to mixed-use ten, and because we didn't really ask for it. I'm trying to balance property rights, you spent a lot of money on this property, and I appreciate that, and you have great rights to develop it, but I'm struggling with the use here. I don't agree with a few folks, or Mr. Leeden, I, I appreciate your comments, I don't agree that property values will tank because of a multifamily development. I've lived near one, and it hasn't happened, at least yet. I, I do think there'll be multifamily development near you, I think it'll be happening at the intersection of Potter Pleasant Plains eventually, right, and the grocery store, and the Austin land, the big field there, where David held his sign for years and years to get the road done. I think it happens in that general area or around Town Hall. I don't think we're immune for multifamily, and we want it, frankly, I want it by our park and those great pickleball courts that we'll probably build at some point. But here, I'm struggling. So if I'm asked to vote tonight, I'm gonna vote no. You said something, Max, about coming back with some conditions and things. I'm open to hear a different idea, but I, I can't get here tonight. The argument about the amenity of a two-car garage, I get that, but another two-car garage pad, and more on-street parking, it just, it, it made me think of the number of people that will be coming in and out of the single driveway. And finally, I appreciate the missing middle argument about housing markets and the crisis. Again, I, I think that's being fixed. I don't know that this is the best place to fix that here. So that's just where I am, I'm struggling, but I appreciate the work you've done and don't wanna dismiss it entirely.
Thank you, Brad. Stephen?
My biggest concern is just, it's already been iterated, but I'll just iterate it again, is that I feel like they're just too close, and I, and I echo Lori's concern in the fact that this is our first project that is impacting the Greenway other than the hospital. And I think if, you know, the Greenway program is still on board, I, I feel like it would be the wrong thing to do to take and, kinda back off that construction, just to be blunt. So my concern there is that, you know, we're basically gonna do away with a multi-year plan, and I, I've expressed this to you guys. So my concern there is just that, and I talked to you guys about, I felt like it was just too close to the road. I didn't go, go up and see the examples. I, I did take in VR it, and I still am concerned about it being that close to Potter, which I know it, it's only thirty-five miles an hour, but, um, yeah. I live right around the corner here, and I, I will say that thirty-five miles an hour only because people can't move that fast, or move faster than that. So I, I, I'm just a little concerned about how close it is to the road myself, and that we're, we're doing away with a major component to our Greenway plan that we've... plan that we've, you know, for better or for worse, we understand that Greenway plans take years to build out fully, but if the, this is only the second piece along this stretch, and my concern would be is that we would be making a choice that's going to impact, you know, not 10 years from now, but 15 years now or 20 years from now, that we wouldn't be able to back off on. But I'm kind of, I'm kind of with Brad. This one here, I'm a little concerned about it. I might be able to get right with it at some point, but I'm not feeling it tonight.
All right. Thank you, Brad. Anybody else? Any other discussion?
Oh, man, that was an insult.
Huh?
That was an insult to Brad.
Yeah, Stephen. Anybody? Stephen or Brad?
Either one.
Anybody else? I'll get you a second, Mike. Any other comments, discussion among council?
No.
All right. Yeah, Mike?
Hearing all the feedback from council members, we'd like to request to defer any vote tonight. Let us take this back, digest it, make some revisions, and bring it back.
All right. Most pleasure to council with that.
Can we defer rather than deny?
Sure. Yes, yes.
Okay. Well, Ben, I, I move that we defer denial for CZ 24.03.01 until all these...
Further conditions.
Yeah, all the conditions that we talked about, and that, you know, the Greenway plan, and I don't know if they could reconfigure this.
Okay. I got, we got a motion from...
So, Mayor, we would recommend picking a date certain in order to kind of pick the date to continue the hearing, too?
How long do you need? A month? Month?
If we can do two months, Amelia's going to be out of the country in June.
Sure, two months. So that would be the second meeting, or, well, we'd only meet once in July and August, so that would be the second Monday in August. Not quite two months, but close enough. So, all right. And if you don't have time, if you don't need it, need further time, let Max know, and we'll push it out. I got a motion from Lori to defer the conditional zoning. Can I get a second?
Wait, would that be recess the hearing? Close the hea, oh, he closed it.
You have closed the hearing, so it would just be to defer to August 12th.
All right. So we got a motion to defer the vote to August 12th on conditional zoning 24.03.01. I got a motion by Lori. Can I get a second?
Second.
Second by Graham. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it? All right. All right. Thank you, sir.
Okay.
All right. All right. Next up is number four, Potter Pleasant Plain Intersection Progress Recognition by Mr. Ayers.
Hey, this is very simple. I kind of brought it up at the discussion with the budget earlier, actually. So, so, long story short, after, I think since 2008 to now, the town has been working to try to get Potter and Pleasant Plains some turn lanes there, and of course, patch and everything. And it has been a monumental effort of pulling teeth across lots of different people. And my thought was just to have something that was just a, you know, a thank you to the people that pulled all the strings that made this happen and get to this point. And as Alex said earlier, construction's kind of already started over there. You've kind of probably saw some of the small things, but major construction is planned to start around the week after Father's Day weekend. So just a small gathering, just, you know, just invite, you know, the few people that I think have been monumental, you know, with the staff, with people that have actually helped, you know, make and moved this forward. Just, you know, an hour kind of meeting, cake, drinks, just that kind of thing. That's all I'm looking at. Just something to say thanks for all the work that everybody's put in for the, I know, I've only been here for four years, and I know yourself, you put in a lot of work. You went all the way to the state and got us money. Linda Paxton, who was on here, she went to Carpo and bought it out to get us some money there. And, I mean, I'm just naming a couple of names, but there's been a village of people that have worked on it to get us to here. So I was just thinking of some way of saying thanks to those folks and the work that they've put in.
Well, I certainly agree. Recognition of our community leaders is always a good thing, and then just celebrate a success. You know, we all know it took a while, but I certainly support putting something together. I mean, so if you want to work with staff, I don't think anybody's going to say no.
So it'll be at your house?
Yeah.
Nah, I was thinking right out here.
Nobody's going to say no to cake.
Yeah, I mean, it's, we're not looking, I mean, you know, a cake and, you know.
Yeah, if the board's interested in doing, one thing I might suggest is, a lot of times the people that have worked here, especially in the community, we kind of know update. Maybe invite DOT to come here and also use it as an opportunity to allow the folks from the community to ask questions of DOT about the project, the timeline, things like that. Would you be open to that?
I mean, this is, I mean, you know kind of how I felt about this project, and I know you've been asked like 26 million questions by me on this project, and it has truly, for the people that don't know about this project, it has truly been a monumental effort to get to here. And, and just really appreciative of all the people that have come to our aid and helped and worked on it. So that's just my philosophy.
Why don't you work with staff and put some details together, a date and time, and let us know.
Sounds like a plan. All right. Well, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Sure. All right. Next up is 4A Pickleball. Brad?
Yeah, Mayor, I just, I don't know if we had to do anything tonight, except I remembered that Eunice had been given some direction to, no, I don't, I don't know that I need you, but, but you're welcome. Always love to have you up.
Yeah, I'll be up here just in case.
Okay. But no, we gave her some direction to spend some savings that she created from the Blair Mill Park Greenway Project and resurface the tennis court. So I just wanted to put a stop, if I might, if the council agrees, just to allow us some time to understand what we heard tonight, what we understand's going on in the pickleball versus tennis community, or as Mark said, that they live well together, or someone said they live well together. So my request to council is to ask staff to come back to us in a few weeks with two or three concept plans for how to convert, replace, do whatever with the existing footprint of our tennis courts, and let us just see what that is and what it might cost.
Could we expand that to include a new dedicated only to pickleball?
Yeah, sure. Yeah.
I mean, I don't know what the cost is, but...
And...
There's land over there.
Okay.
Yeah.
What, so, what area would you like to see new pickleball courts in?
Anywhere.
Anywhere?
It could be any one of our parks. I'm just saying, right now, there is land over here if we wanted to do it.
So maybe the question is, what does it cost to build a new pickleball court on local ground? On a, yeah, that's not what I was asking, but I don't disagree. It'd be, it'd be interesting to know the cost. So...
I don't necessarily want to get rid of two tennis courts permanently, but I don't see a problem. I think we could add one or two new pickleball courts, expand what we have.
You open to other locations in town?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Thank you.
I wouldn't want to make you guys happy and make the tennis people angry.
Yeah, I don't like taking away something and replacing it with something else. So I agree with what David said there. Just bring us some options, and we'll go from there.
Can I ask one quick question? Now, I know that when you joined Parks and Rec, you mentioned hunting down some grant money. Have you had any success with that?
Not at this point in time. I, now that I'm chair, I'm going to be praying a little bit more about taking a look at where we can possibly find money. A buddy of mine, he just put a pickleball court in his backyard with lights for $10,000 with a fence. You know, there were other, other options. Monroe took their tennis courts, and they put lines in it so that you can do four pickleball courts on the current tennis courts with these nets that are on wheels. So there's a, there's a variety of options that pass it on to you.
All right. Well, that's what we'll do. Brad, I'm wanting to know, once you started speaking, everybody got up and left. I thought that was all the pickleball.
Got it, yeah.
All right. All righty. Next up is number, yeah, number five, the 2725 Old Monroe Road, broker direction on additional potential tenants. I got contacted by Life Church in Charlotte. They're Stallings Residence, and they were interested in this property, and they were told by the broker that the council is not interested in any more applicants, and so they would not share any information, would not show them the, would not show them the property. They wanted to visit the property. And when I found out this, I called Alex and said, Alex, I thought, the last thing I remember, my memory is not the best, so I can be corrected, but I was, we right here, I told the broker, any applicant, we want to hear about it. You know, I'm open to hearing anything. That gives us leverage. The more options we have gives the town leverage on what to do with that piece of property. So that was my only concern. So if I'm wrong, and we want to focus in on one piece, one applicant, that's the pleasure to council, but I think that would be a mistake. So...
I just had one quick question. I mean, we've been working, it sounds like, working with potential tenants for a while. I'd just like to know where any of those are at.
Well, their engineering is met with their engineering team. That's at least I know. I mean, Alex obviously knows more.
I think...
Kevin knows.
I think they're working with, somebody else have a comment for it? Okay. So I think they have gone back, they've had their general contractor go in and, and kind of look at the building before they respond to our LOI. They need to have a better idea of what the outfit costs will be. The general response we've heard is that they're generally open to the town's requests for, as a business, before they make a major, probably seven-figure investment. They want to get a better idea of what that expenditure would be. And we've got scheduled at our next council meeting for the broker to come in and answer any questions the board might have, and just provide a general update.
Mayor, I would never go so far to say you were wrong or mistaken about that, but my, my feeling is this. So from the policy level, we gave staff direction to go find a broker and solicit retail, restaurant, brewery, those types of uses for that building, and only those types of uses. And then in the meantime, we've said no, generally, to another church. I'm, I'm, I'm not in favor of a, of a different policy, let me put it that way, that, that would remove our focus from an activity, retail, restaurant, brewery type use, which is part and parcel of a town center, small area plan. It doesn't mean a church can't be in a small area plan downtown. In fact, it ought to be perhaps. I just don't think I'm ready to tell the broker to, to open up the doors and solicit from everybody. So that's, that's what I think. I would not, I would, I would call it out of scope for a church to be viewing the property under the current council policy.
Well, maybe that's what he thought that we were saying. I should have been more clear that I was open to any type of, because I agree with you, the first time we talked about was, you know, the retail component, and, but he stuck on that word brewery and clinging to it like it's life's death door. So, but...
So he hasn't gotten any other offers besides the brewery and two churches?
Well, I wouldn't know. He hadn't brought anything to us.
Well, no, he shared some information with us. I think he shared with us a long list of things. Many of them are rental equipment, the things you might expect to take an empty big box warehouse-looking thing rather than adaptively reuse it. So we saw that list.
Yeah, but no LOIs from, other than the two we got.
That's right, yeah.
So nobody's, they might have made a phone call, but hadn't expressed, taking the next step, you know.
But, but truly, I don't believe anything on that list was, was in the policy framework of retail, restaurant, brewery. I don't think that that wanted to submit an LOI to us.
That's my request, just to let the church see the property and submit a LOI. But if it's not in the scope of what y'all think, that's fine. So, weren't my feelings.
Just for, for this person in general?
Yeah, this is the only one that's contacted me, yeah.
I think we'll have a better idea after. Do you say next, the June meeting he's coming?
Yes, sir. The broker is scheduled to come.
I have an idea where we are with that status, whether it's, how close we are to anything after the next meeting.
That sounds good. I'll tell him, I'll contact him after the June meeting. Which one is he coming to? I mean, the first or second one?
The first one.
First one. Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you all. All right. Next up is Alex in Stormwater.
Sewer or storm?
Sewer, sewer, not Stormwater, sewer.
We're the same thing.
Sewer be, Stormwater be a shorter discussion.
All right. I've got a hard copy of this to give to the board as well.
I got it. I can pass it out. Do you need one?
Yeah. Pass. Let me, dramatic. So we get a lot of questions about sewer capacity, and it can, it can frankly be pretty confusing, honestly. And I think a lot of that confusion has to stems with, the county has watersheds, and sometimes the watersheds are the same as the service areas, but sometimes they're not. So for example, 12 Mile Creek serves the 12 Mile watersheds. Crooked Creek serves the 12 Mile, or, Crooked Creek is served by the Crooked Creek Plant. But the Goose Creek watershed is served by the 12 Mile Creek. They kind of pump it over there, and it's a whole host of things. So when you look at this chart, the two ones that really affect Stallings are going to be the 12 Mile Creek and the Crooked Creek. It's the top two. So the 12 Mile Creek is going to affect basically the, the top half and the bottom half of town. And Crooked Creek is going to affect smack dab in the middle. So I've got some maps. If you can just pass these around, please, and take a look at that for me. So... Some general rules. So, again, Crooked Creek is right there in the middle. That's the green. 12 Mile Creek up top and a bottom, kind of showing that. So with that being said...
let's go through and talk through each of those. So 12 Mile Creek currently has 7.5 MGD. That stands for million gallons per day. That means sewage, they can treat up to a million gallons, 7.5 million gallons per day. And when you look here, the amount that's permitted flow, it's 89.2 percent. And I believe, Kevin, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's 90 percent where the state requires you. Once you get there, you have to have a plan of how to do it. So they're getting close. And just from a general standpoint, you know, nine, they're pushing 90 percent there. The good news on 12 Mile Creek is that, uh, they have a project, uh, that they expect to be operational that will, in about 24 months, that will expand the 12 Mile, uh, Creek sewer capacity from 7.5 million gallons per day to 9 million gallons a day. So that's an additional 1.5 million gallons a day. Now, that's the good news. Here's the bad news, though, is that it's only going to help this bottom part. It's not going to help up top on the northern end of town. Why is that, Alex? Well, uh, the reason is because this is served by the Poplin Pump Station and it's pumped to 12 Mile Creek. The county staff have reported to us, there is some capacity in the Poplin Pump Station EQ tank, basically the infrastructure that gets it from uptown or on the upside of town down to the 12 Mile Creek plant. So, but the county has said that that area will not used up completely. Their words are it won't last long. They can't say whether it'll be a year or a few years. I've asked them how much is left and waiting for a response on that. But it sounds like they're, they're not far away from using up that capacity.
That counting things that have already, that are approved.
Good, good question. Um, so when you look at the chart, you can see several things, right? You see the average, actual average daily flow. So that's exactly that. It's how much sewage is going and being treated and showing up to plant from those sources. The.
Stay there. Hey, Max. Roll him up in just a minute. So just hang on.
I was just kidding. Actually, I was trying to sneak to get my pen. First is the volunteer. Um, and then over here, this is the permitted flows. So it shows both. So ultimately, the capacity numbers include what's built and also what's permitted. You'll also see rainfall. You might say, what the heck does weather have to do with this? Well, typically when it rains, water goes in the ground and oftentimes in any stormwater system, anywhere in the world, the water, some places more than other places will get into the pipes. Pipes, it goes just like the rest of the sewage and it travels to the sewage plant and it's treated. That's called I and I, inflow and infiltration. And when that happens, the amount of rainfall, basically when it goes up, more water gets into the pipes, it goes treated, that affects the capacity of the system. There's things that people do to try to limit the amount of water that gets in their system, but it's still a, a constant battle for all wastewater systems. So, um, with that being said, uh, it sounds like the northern 12 Mile Creek area on the north side of town in a relatively short period of time is going to be out of capacity. We don't know how long it is. They can't say, but it could be a year, it could be a few years, but sometime in the near future. And per county staff, it, it doesn't sound like there's any plan to, um, there's no plans to upgrade that area after that. So let's go on to the next area. This, the Crooked Creek area, this is the middle of the town.
Is the, is, is this the 26th that are in here, the .8886? Those are projects that are in the tank for being, being permitted?
That's right.
And so they, these are not included in the numbers in the top box. Okay.
Okay, got it. Got you.
So, so this where it says that it's actual permitted flows, that this additional flow of .868 is not part of this. So this is in addition to that.
Right. So again, this 12 Mile Creek, the, they're not going to upgrade that pump station EQ tank. So there's, there's no plans right now for them to expand that. So once that runs out, it sounds like it runs out. Crooked Creek, and from an economic development standpoint, this is where we've kind of been most focused on, the middle part of town, if you will. Union West Business Park, the hospital, um, even part of our downtown. Here's Old Monroe Road. So if you look here, uh, that is at 86.4 percent capacity. So you may say, well, that's better than 12 Mile Creek, but it's 86.4 percent of 1.9 million gallons. So it's a lower amount. So it's actually not as, as, there's not as much left in Crooked Creek as there is in 12 Mile Creek. So, um, the county, uh, did purchase property to build a new sewer plant, uh, at one time. However, uh, the cost was so high that the county commissioners decided not to increase the rates to pay the cost of building the sewer plant. So that, for Crooked Creek, there's not any plans to make any expansions there as well. Obviously, everyone knows building a sewer plant, building any major construction, it, it's not an overnight thing, but with sewer plants, it takes on average between eight to 10 years to design, to permit. And the permitting is one of the reasons it takes so long, construct a new plant. So if the county commissioners decided today that they wanted to build a new sewer plant, then it would take eight to 10 years before it could come online. So right now, there's just no plans to expand the capacity at Crooked Creek at this time. So again, this shows our area, but it also serves a big chunk of Indian Trail as well. I believe even their downtown. Um, so capacity is, uh, is short there as well, which leaves kind of the area south, southwest, if you will, of Old Monroe Road. The area, one of the areas we were just talking about, um, as having any additional capacity. So it wouldn't surprise me if you see more development pressure down here, you know, as this capacity gets more. We're already starting to hear rumblings from kind of developers that, you know, they're not sure if they're going to get capacity, you know, having second thoughts about projects, things like that. That's just feedback we've heard from developers. So again, up here, capacity is running. Down here, there's a little bit left based on the 12 Mile Creek expansion.
This information's a little old. Brian Matthews sent me the list of projects in Stallings and, uh, this is anywhere of 23, so over a year old. So the only project they were considering in, in Crooked Creek was a neighborhood called Stallings Farms. You know where that is, Max?
Rycroft School, elementary school, yeah.
Oh, it's right across the street from the elementary school?
Yeah.
Oh, that's not 12 Mile? I thought that was. Yeah.
That was a nice one.
That would have a park. Oh, I see the picture of the school. Okay. Gotcha. I don't know if it's been approved or not, but that was the only one. The one that sucked up all our usage was Stinson Village. 128,000 gallons per day out of Poplin 12 Mile. Rest of the projects are small.
So do we not have any legal recourse? I mean, like, in some ways, again, I feel like people who own property can't sell their property, can't develop their property. At the very least, the county should not be charging them any taxes on it. I mean, if I own a piece of property that I can't build on, I can't, I can't sell it. I mean, they basically have made that piece of property useless. Do we not have any recourse or anything of that nature?
Yeah.
Almost seems like we could do like a, a class action lawsuit.
You know, that's, that's interesting. I appreciate the question. I'm not, I'm not sure. I'm not familiar with that kind of cause of action. That's something if the board wanted to, we could ask Melanie to research.
I think it's time. I mean, this is, this is going to kill, I mean, this is basically going to kill the town. Yeah, it's.
When's your next WUMA meeting?
My next WUMA meeting will be next, next, next month.
Maybe bring it up with them, too.
Well, I, this is, this is horrible. And the fact that it's gonna, I mean, some of these people are sitting on million dollar plus lots that they can't even, they can't sell, but yet at the same time, Union County is expecting them to pay a, a huge chunk of change. I mean, the people across the street, we've heard them come here and say the exact thing, that they're sitting on, you know, 1.4 million dollars worth of property that they can't do anything with. And so it, it just seems wrong that they're basically crippling the people to be able to do things. And I mean, we've heard that from down here at the hospital. We're hearing it, you know, over, across, anyway, it just seems to me like we should be, there should be some type of legal reaction to that. You should not have to pay taxes on a property you can't use or, and you can't sell.
Well, the alternative is to do what the, uh, Kevin Presley is, I don't know when he's going to bring it to us. I know he's talked to, tried to talk to David. I don't know if you've talked to him, did he? And then, uh, a neighborhood is going to have their own sewer, just like, uh, Country Woods East and Old Sycamore have their own sewer plant. Now, this is million dollar plus homes and he, he's told me the sewer plant's going to be state of the art, much better than what's in Country Woods East. Let's hope so. But, uh, that's, that's an option. That's an option. So.
Yeah, it better be.
Another, another thing I'd point out is the board has authorized kind of conversation with Charlotte Water. These are ongoing as well.
Even, even those are going to be.
Expensive?
Expensive and years away, right?
Everything's going to be years away.
Yeah. I don't think there are any quick solutions here.
All righty.
We're going back to our houses, folks.
All right, Alex.
May I just ask the one question? Why do we? Spend a lot of money and I feel, you know, focused on spending more money, but why?
We've lost multiple million dollar projects.
You're making the point that there's a segment of our population that's probably pleased with the moratorium on development, I would imagine? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, and, yeah, exactly. I mean, I kind of want to step, to me, it's like stepping back. Growth, growth, growth. I keep hearing that, but why? I mean.
Don't, don't say, don't say growth. Think, think redevelopment, because that's really what I think about. We're, we're, we're going to redevelop areas of town that have, at least on my side of town, that have depreciated in value. You're going to replace some of that with better, more utility, better for multiple groups to use, newer infrastructure, newer buildings. So it's just going to, it's going to be investing in the town and bringing the town up. Whereas right now, you know, some of these properties are really old and starting to look pretty dilapidated, right? I mean, we've got a gas station down here that's boarded up, right? We've got a building over here that's, it's closed. We've got houses that are boarded up. It's just, that's what I'm thinking about. It's not growth as much as it's, if you're not redeveloping to some degree, you're retrograding, if you ask me. But I also think that from, we just talked about the budget. I mean, there are places in town that could use some economic development and we've lost multiple million dollar projects that would have, you know, helped the bottom line here. That, that's my two cents.
All right, Alex, thank you for the, the update on the data. All right, can I get a message, a motion to go into closed session pursuant to 143-318.1185 and six?
Mayor, I'd like the parcel number for.
All right, and then it'll be closed session for parcel number 07129315. And we will invite, uh, Ms. Karen Reed to attend. Can I get a motion?
It's a move.
Motion by Mr. Shoal, second by Mr. Ayers. All in favor?
Aye.
And it looks like we can stay here.